I call this meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City Schools Board of Education to order Mr. Gitter.
Mr. Koval, here. Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Here.
All right, so this evening is a work session. We have two topics. And I turn it over to the superintendent.
Okay, good evening, everyone. If you recall, back in November, when we last met with Kathy La Sota, we had some discussion about my board goals, and so I have that here for you. And you requested that I provide an update in February as one of the work sessions of where I was with the goals. So that was the purpose of this meeting, is just to kind of informally talk about where we are with the four areas of focus and to give some updated information of what just to tell why I chose those areas, and then where we are. So, you have your PowerPoint? Thank you. Okay, so any questions, feel free to stop me. So we have four areas of focus, which were program evaluation, student growth and performance measures, parenting and community engagement, and Heights High Transition to the Wiley site. So, when we're evaluating instructional programs, there are five key questions that I think are important, is that is the instructional program clearly defined? What evidence exists that the program is effective? Is an accountability process building in the program? Is the program sustainable? Is the program equitable? So every instructional program that we have in a district, we really need to think about those programs and hold those programs to these five key questions. So question one, are they clearly defined? You see this kind of graphic, these big question marks to say, do we really, really know? Are there clear practical descriptions of what the instructors and learners do? So when we say we want Program A, does it clearly say students will do this, teachers will do that? And are there tools to allow teachers and learners and parents to determine the impact of the instructional program in each student? So can parents, is there a way that parents know that my child is progressing because of this program that the district is implementing? So those should be clearly defined in any program that we choose. Second, what proof? What evidence do we have that the program that we've chosen is working? Are students making academic gains in regards to time, training, and materials? Because remember, there's teacher time for training, there's students' time with the teachers when implementing the programs, and there's a cost to materials for these programs. So we need to make sure that students are making academic gains based on these, evidence of these. And is the evidence tied to an individual, or has, or is the program worked well with different teachers? So can we say this program is working well because of Scott Gaynor? And if Scott Gaynor leaves, the program goes down the tube? Or is this program working well in the entire building because we have intentionally put a focus to train teachers and give the appropriate materials so that the program is implemented with fidelity? Accountability, so I really like this graphic here. So when we think about accountability and holding people responsible for the implementation of our programs, so we're monitoring procedures, ensure timely instructional adjustments to prevent learner failures. So when we see that students are not doing well in any program that we're implementing, what procedures do we have in place to make sure that that failure turns to success for their student? And then again, making sure that the parents see the progress that we're making. I really like this visual, this statement that says, "The most important factor in the student's success is the person standing at the front of the classroom." So we ask the question, is the program sustainable? Are resources committed for planning and staff development? So once we put dollars in various programs in the district, we need to ask ourselves, if these dollars or these grant dollars go away, and we see the success in these programs, can we sustain it? And are we able to commit these resources? So can we say to Scott, "Scott, do we have a line item for that program?" Because we believe strongly, and we have the evidence to show, that those programs are working. And is the program equitable? So three questions I put here. Will the program impede the progress on any group of students? So do we see the programs that are working well for one group and not for others? And does the program have the flexibility to successfully address needs of diverse learners? So we know in this district, we have learners in all the spectrums, but our programs should address all those program needs. And has evidence on program effectiveness been analyzed for adverse effects on different learner groups? So are we really looking at the effectiveness of the program and making the modifications? Because you're going to go at any time and make mid-course corrections if needed. So, so far with our evaluation tools, we've established, we set out to do four things. One, establish the evaluation metric for all instructional programs. We've completed this, and we're currently being used, this evaluation tool is being used to evaluate our performance-based grouping program. We wanted also a deeper analysis of the program design and results. So we have surveys, we're surveying the staff, staff surveys rather, are in progress, and program audits are also in place. Three years of program data collection. So we know that some data points would be difficult to collect, because we've not collected data each year, as we probably, so we could have to go in back and just getting a lot of qualitative data points from teachers, and then digging in some other places for some quantitative results. And number four, summarize recommendation for ed services. So we're going to make, once these results come in, there would be recommendations, will be made to ed services on whether or not that we should continue with some of the programs that we have in the district. So, Program One, International Baccalaureate Program. So our International Baccalaureate Program is divided up into three programs, PYP, NYPD, and DP. So currently in our district, we have the PYP for grades K through 5, the NYPD is grades 6 through 10, and the diploma program is for 11th and 12th graders. So anticipated outcomes, so in 2011, there was a presentation to the district that talked about the anticipated outcomes from the IB program. Talked about students will receive rigorous and relevant instruction, success in post-secondary education, increased student achievement, enhanced the learning experience, and then intended outcome is that all students will receive, I'm sorry, all students will read at grade level by the end of third grade. Year one and two, IB coordinators will be, you know, learn from a monitoring skills, so there would be IB coordinators chosen and trained. And teachers will learn IB vocabulary, inquiry-based focused instruction, and teachers also learn how to develop, teach, assess, and reflect on units of inquiry. In years three and four, teachers will begin to develop units for EOLA math aligned to the Common Core State Standards, and five fully functioning IB PYP rural schools by 2016. And where we are to date. So currently, Roxborough Elementary is a PYP authorized. Roxborough Middle School just had its authorization visit this month, and so we're waiting for next steps on authorization. Canterbury is in year two of its candidacy, along with Fairfax, Oxford, and Noble is in year three. Boulevard and Garrity are STEM-focused, and Monticello is in one year of exploratory. So, Program Two is performance-based grouping. So also in December 2011, the performance-based grouping model was chosen, because the data revealed that one-third of the students were not reading at grade level. So the district response was to focus resources to ensure that all students were reading on grade level by the end of third grade, and how the performance-based grouping in elementary schools. So, let me go back to that one. How do I go back? James? Sorry. Thank you. So currently, back one more, please. Thank you. So currently, the performance-based grouping, we're still, we're looking at this, we're, as I stated in the previous slide, that we're currently doing teacher, staff surveys with the teachers on the performance-based grouping. And we're looking, we know currently that our students, now we had 77% of our students reading, third grade students reading on grade level. So we know that our students are performing.
Which, what year currently?
Currently.
Okay.
Currently. So we're still looking at how, exactly, is what's happening in those groups correlated to those outcomes, and which schools are doing well, and which schools perhaps need some more interventions, if any.
So in the three years, it went from approximately 60, 6% not reading to, you said...
6% reading. It went from one-third to one-quarter of people not.
Two-thirds.
Okay.
Three-quarters.
So, not having the actual data, it's, would seem that this program is working to increase the reading levels for our students. But again, we're going to look closely at the data, just to make sure that the program as designed is actually, because that was in 2011.
Right.
So our next program, so our Title I programs. So, we have, there are two Title I model, program models, targeted assistance and the school-wide Title I model. So I just kind of outlined some of the highlights from a targeted assistance program that talks about improved achievement participating in students, use extended time strategies, they provide accelerated high-quality curriculum, and it minimizes the removal of children from regular classes during the regular school hours, supports the general ed curriculum, and implements strategies to increase parent involvement, targeted assistance. And the school-wide program uses school-wide reform strategies, instructions by highly-qualified teacher, parent involvement, additional supports, transition plans, and flexible grouping to meet the individual needs of all students. So currently in Cleveland Heights, okay, okay. So currently Cleveland Heights uses the school-wide model, and our school-wide model supports performance-based grouping in the elementary schools. So what we've decided to do is to use our Title I dollars to implement that model across our schools. Also supports literacy leads in our elementary schools, and supports one teacher at both middle schools. Our Advanced Placement Program is the next program that we're looking at. We implemented teacher training every two years that will begin, I'm sorry, I think this should be three years, beginning in summer 2015, and then in between those, students, I mean, teachers would do a local training. Students would take the AP exam, and district would pick up the cost. Currently, students do not have to take the AP exam, but I really want them to have that experience, to really see if what they're learning in the classroom is going to yield them the results, so that they can get that college credit. Course selected, course selections, rather, excuse that typo, reviewed and new course sequences are established. So what was happening was had a lot of courses that didn't have, the students haven't taken in a long time, and some courses did not have maximum students, you know, six or seven students. And since we are transitioning to Wiley, we wanted to make sure that we maximize those courses, and some courses, we decided that we were offered every other year, perhaps. And courses were moved from semester to year-long, and student contracts will be reviewed for possible modifications if needed. So currently, students and their parents sign a contract that states that they will stay in the course, and if they decide to drop, it would be a certain time that they would drop that course. So we want to make sure that if students, that all students are, all students have those contract signs and understand what that means, if they choose to stay in the programs, and really make sure that all students are doing it and teachers are following it. So that is accountability piece that we want to make sure is happening in that program. And then at gifted and talented, there was some recommendations from the 2015, should be 14, 15, MSAND recommendations, and that was staff professional development on how to recognize and identify giftedness in minority students, a review of the system practice and procedures relative to gifted identification, gifted identification, and examining screening criteria, cut scores, and identification tests. So, to date, on this slide, I'm going to go back to this. To date, we have, we, the current professional development, TOYA is currently working to get that professional development started this summer, and they have changed the criteria for students, and looked at a different way of identifying students in the elementary school for gifted and talented services. So that has taken place already, based on those recommendations last June. So the focus area two was student growth and performance measures. So I put this little here, I kept it listed, it says, "I can assure you, sir, the company is doing quite well despite what the figures are saying." So I put this here, because despite what the data shows, we know that our students, we still see student growth in various areas. So this whole notion about our testing is really depicting what is happening in our schools is not necessarily true. We know that that's what the state is measuring us on, but we know that we, and we have pockets of success throughout the district. This other one, I really like this fear of accountability. And this first slide is saying, "No biggie, but if he misses problem nine, we'll poor your accreditation, and you're bringing shame on your community." The next person, "No pressure, but if he misses problem nine, you're out of a teaching job." And the next one, "David, it's problem nine. You know problem nine? Relax, relax." So we think about this whole culture of testing and the fear that people have of their jobs, it's unfortunate that, unfortunate that that has been created, but it's the student's performance on these tests that's going to detect those outcomes as stated by the state. So there is a lot of fear across the United States with testing, and as today, we know we started the PARC test. It's really not a good place, I don't think, for districts to be in, and teachers to feel that their jobs are at stake based on these outcomes. So the four essential questions that I think are very important when we think about student growth, what do we want students, what do we want all students to learn? How do we know that they're learning it? How do we respond if they're not learning it? And how do we respond if they already know it? Those are four key questions that we should always ask ourselves when it comes to measuring student learning. So ways to measure student learning, we know we have formative assessments, those are teacher-designed tests, there's just some, just some quick, the temperature checks of how well students know what I just taught. Small school, small group instruction, we've had, done an investment in the district with co-teachers, so you can go to some of the classrooms in elementary schools, and you see a little teacher that's pulled some students to the side that are reteaching to the subject matter, and those two teachers have worked together and planned those lessons specifically for those kids. We see summative tests, did students master the unit objectives? We really have to have summative tests, because when we have these objectives that teachers have worked on, how do we know that students are mastering those? So those summative, you know, the unit tests are really good. And our benchmark, our interim tests, these often mimic the standardized tests. So you really want to give students, you want to test their knowledge in a way that they will be, that they receive these forms of questions again on some other standardized So Ohio's student growth measures, and you know, Ohio uses value-added, approved vendor assessments, and locally determined measures. So the student learning objectives, shared attributions, and approved vendor assessments. So, and you have a form here that kind of reminds us again what those assessments are throughout the district. So our next step here is that, I know it's a little blurry, but I want us, we, the district, will have to focus. And where we're going to focus on, we're going to decide what district assessments that we need to discontinue and why. Because this is a lot, even when we put this list together, you think, oh my gosh, this is a lot of data. But we're going to, the ed services team is going to go back again and decide what assessments we're going to discontinue, and why are we going to discontinue those assessments. What professional development on using formative assessments? Again, formative assessments are the ones that we really should push, even in the document from the principals that unite us, they talked about how formative assessments are the best assessments that teachers can use to see if students are being successful for what, with what they've taught. More Think Gate training for teachers. Think Gate is a tool that we've invested in, in this district, to ensure that teachers are taking the test results and they put it in this, almost like a bank, in which they can go back and look at, how well did our students do on question three, question four, across the district? So this is a tool that we need, teachers need more training on it, based on our investment. Going to incorporate data institutes as a common district practice. You know, we always need to focus on the data, how well are we doing, what changes? We currently are using Ohio Improvement Process, which allows the district teams and the building level teams to really go back and assess how well our students are doing, and what instructional practices that we need to adjust. But I think using those institutes across, and then it has to become a common language, everything that we're going to do, we're going to look at the data and make sure that we're focusing on our results before we make any decision to move forward. And then investigating the principals and administrative academy, we, I see that as a gap, that a lot of our administrators do not, are not confident with their knowledge of looking at data and making data-driven decisions. And I think that's an investment that we have to make in our leaders, to make sure that we know that data informs instruction, and making sure that when they're in those classrooms and they're looking at what's happening in the classroom, that they can go back and direct their teachers to those instructional practices that they're doing, based on what the data suggests. You know, if we're teaching a concept, you know, how do we know our students are doing well? It goes back to those four essential questions. You know, what do we want them to know? How do we know they're doing, how do we know that they know it? What are we going to do if they don't know it? And if they already know it, what do we do with those kids that sit in the classroom and they know everything you've taught them? You know, what are we going to say? It takes us back to those, and making sure that our principals are really comfortable in those discussions. And then the third focus area was parenting and community engagement. So I did that report, the first 100 days report was completed, and we've started the strategic planning process. So those are two big, big pieces with parenting and community engagement. And the last focus area is the one that the board, you told me, to Lisa, we have to make sure we have this one, is the Cleveland Heights High School Transition to Wiley. So what I've done, and you know, in lieu of time, that's one, so I've kind of outlined everything that's happened each month. So here are the items of the things that have happened in the months of September and October. I thought it was interesting that the ed services, I mean, the team, actually, they went to Beechwood, because they wanted to look at block scheduling at Beechwood High School. And from that visit, they kind of was looking at some of the new high school space, and say, hey, I think that would look good in our, in our building. And they also visited Jackson High School in Maslin. You see, we've had ongoing conversations with John Carroll, and we've talked about the administrative changes there. November, continued discussion on course offerings, advanced placement, dual enrollment. So those Apex class, Apex classes, foreign language courses, those discussions in November. Again, technology needs assessments, and we get more on the technology when James comes up. They created a parent message, December, physical space and recommendations to the architects. And then January 15, 20, last month, we looked at course guidebooks that was issued to students. Class sizes were determined, furniture inventory is completed, boxes have been delivered to teachers so they can start packing. We had a high school planning committee, community meeting, Roxborough Parent, Roxborough and Monticello Parent Meeting, February 9. So March 15, we have the high school staff meetings, and March 2, March 12, parent community meetings, and May 12, we have the Time Capsule Burial Celebration. So those are things that are happening. And then as more things happen with the transition, we'll get that information out. So those are the updates that, that I have on those four areas. Any questions or concerns?
That's a lot of information.
I got a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
When we think about the PARC exams, they started tomorrow or today? So are they, they're a subject area, right? There are math, English Language Arts, but they're not all grades, are they? They're not all grades, are they?
Yeah, this, we have third, who's, I'm thinking, third, fourth? Tomorrow's fourth, fifth grade, and then, come on, Allison. And your question?
So that if we look at this, I don't see PARC per se on here. Is it that new state, is it new?
It's the new state test.
New state test. So everywhere we see that, that's one of the PARC.
So the reason that it's listed as new state test and not just PARC is because the math and the English Language Arts test are developed by PARC. The social studies and science tests are developed by AIR, so it's the same research group that the state has used for the OAAs.
That was my question, really.
Together, they are the new state tests.
Yeah, I thought it was math and English Language Arts, but there was another parallel going on. Okay. So that was a little confusing.
And we've always had the, the science test in grade five and eight.
Right.
And then there's a science component for OGT. So we'll still have the science test for five and eight. The OGT is being phased out, and at the high school level, there are end-of-course tests. So this year, students will take the physical science exam, and then starting next year, the physical science will be phased out, and they'll have the biology test.
Yeah. Do the states, all states didn't opt in to the PARC test, did they?
That's, that's correct. So when...
Right now, there are only nine.
There was the adoption of the Common Core State Standards, there were two consortiums that rose to the top to develop the test that would measure student understanding of those standards. It was the SMART Consortium and then PARC. So the state of Ohio, along with, at that time, I want to say that there were, I think, 26 other states that were invested in PARC. And then over the years, that number has changed, so.
I think it's nine today.
Now, so it was 11 when the school year started.
Yeah, I think two have dropped.
Yeah, Mississippi pulled out.
So what is that, only nine states are using it now?
Right.
Nine out of the original, I think there were 26 that originally said that they would work with the PARC Consortium. I have not followed SMART as closely, but that is another larger organization that was developing.
So we don't have any real sense of how many states are opting in to do something of this nature at this point?
Well, it's either nine or 11 for the, for PARC.
No, no, I mean, the PARC is one piece, and you're saying that there's another one that sort of mirrors what is going on in PARC, the SMART.
SMART, right. I don't know those numbers. I stopped following them.
But can I piggyback on?
Sure.
So, but, but do states have to do one or the other if they've opted out of PARC? Okay.
I think they, I think they...
So there, we don't know how many are currently using SMART?
Correct.
Okay.
And then there are states, and I happen to know this one, because I have friends who live there, is where I attended school, like Florida is not participating in either, but they have continued with their own Florida State Test. And so many of them, if they have, like, there's something that's there, so if they haven't gone with SMART, or they haven't gone with PARC, then they are continuing to use their state-developed test.
Are these legislatively mandated or mandated by the, just the State Board of Education? You know what I'm saying? Do they go?
I do. It's, it's, it's both, and I'm not sure who initiated what part, but I do know, like, for example, the state legislature limited the number of required tests for, let's say, high school graduation to seven. So I believe the Ohio Department of Education's original plan was to have, I want to say, 11 tests, and then the state legislature adjusted that to seven. So there, there's decision-making on both ends, but the, what the state representatives... So, there, there, there's decision-making on both ends, but the, what the state representatives determine can limit what the state board wants.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Eric?
On this chart, could we get one, how many days or hours are allocated out to these? Because I don't know if it's half an hour versus a full day is a big difference. The other thing, too, would be from looking at these different ones, what, which one, which one, which of these are mandated by the state? Which ones are cognitive assessment, like the old Iowa tests? Which ones are, you know, some of these are just midterms and finals. Well, that's just, that's the beast. That's what we do. So, I don't know, I don't really see that as a burden because that's what you got to do. And then the last one would be, which ones are us just saying, hey, we want to throw something else on, you know, another test? So, that, these are all sort of, the way they're laid out, so everyone, everything's sort of equal. I'm trying to figure out, what do we have to do? What are we choosing to do? And then, how much time is being allocated? Because it's sort of.
So, you're, so the column of created by isn't descriptive enough because it doesn't, it doesn't designate whether they were mandated?
Well, I mean, I've got, well, in some of these, I mean, I just, you know, I'm trying to wrap my head around, what do we, what do we have to do?
Right.
What do we choose to do? And what do we choose to do that's sort of extra?
So, if, reading it from the right, the one, two, the third column from the right, identifies those tests that are required by the Ohio Department of Education. But then, like you said, one might say, we must do a midterm or a final exam to assess what the students are doing.
Right.
So, but that, that would not necessarily be a requirement. Or when you look at some of the tests, for example, like, let's say, Dibbles for kindergarten and the lower grades.
Okay.
It's, it isn't one that's required by the Ohio Department of Education. However, the, the teachers find it useful in assessing what students know in their reading ability. So, part of our conversation at the close of the 2013-14 school year and looking at what we would take away and what we wanted to keep, that was one of the assessments that they wanted to, to keep.
Well, I'm just, if I'm going to, whenever I'm going to lament and complain about how much testing we do, I want to make sure I'm complaining about tests that the state gives us to do as opposed to stuff that we choose to do.
So, that, your, your catch would be right there in that third column.
I want to know what I'm supposed to complain, I want to know what I'm, I want them complaining, I want to complain about the right thing.
If you see the yes, that's, that's the one that's required or mandated by the Ohio Department of Education.
Can I do a little follow-up on that one?
Sure.
It seems to me that one other way of looking at this is sorting it by what's required and what's not. So, it's sort of all out there, and then we put the tags no or yes on them. And it looks like a database, so we could probably sort and say, these are the ones that we absolutely are mandated by the state.
That's, you're saying just sort it by the column that's already identified?
Yeah, so we are sorted so that, so that you can have, if we, as we think about what we have to do, we can, we can see the lump of things that the state is doing all together. Right now, you have to go through and count it up and so on. But just another way to look at it, in my opinion. Because I think it's, it's organized by time now, I guess.
By grade level.
Grade level.
So, it was chunks to see what assessments were taken by students at each.
Well, it still goes to the issue. I'm very curious as far as what kind of time allocation we're talking about, because that's usually, you have the lament of testing and you have lament of the amount of time we spend on testing. So, to me, it's, if it's an hour, well, that's inconvenient, but an hour's an hour. If it's a day or multiple days, that's a much more of an imposition on what we want to do. So, if we can get that kind of, to get a sense of it. Again, I'm the newbie, I'm still, I guess, technically, I'm still the newbie on this. So, to get a sense of how many days, how many hours we're spending on this kind of assessment would be, I would be curious to know.
So, it isn't something that, that we have tracked, and it can vary by grade level, by teacher, their method of giving, like, some of the elementary assessments are done by observation, so it could vary. But, but our, our union leadership has asked their membership to keep track of that, so that's something that we can reach out to Mr. Kline or Mr. Shaner to see what they've collected.
I'm more interested on the, basically, the state test kind of stuff, the stuff that were, if you're shutting the classroom, everyone's taking, I'm not, assessment or observation, I'm not that concerned about, per se, but more of where, okay, everyone's sitting down, we're taking a test. That, that kind of stuff, I'd be very curious to see the, the allocation and time on that.
I had a couple of things, just following up on what Eric was just talking about. I don't need you to go through each one right now, but are there opportunities with at least some of these exams to use them as learning tools? So, is there feedback? Is there, I know in some cases, you take the exam and you get a score and that's, you're done. But are, are, that would be something to know, because I think in part, when you're talking about what exams to get out, you don't, you have some options to remove exams, but the honest idea is to fill in gaps, right? So, so there's going to be overlap in different exams of what's, what's handled, and so if you can somehow be sure you, you capture all the gaps, you could take a couple of exams and maybe put them into one. If, if an exam allows you to have feedback where you actually learned from an exam, it's a different, to me, it's a whole different experience than exam where you just take an exam and get a score. So, it's just something, it's sort of a comment more than anything I really need you to respond to. Dr. Dixon, in terms of the evaluating instructional programs, I, I pretty much know you do this, but it's not in here explicitly, and you, you won't be shocked at all to hear me say this. One of the questions, you have those five questions that have to be in your second slide, but one of the questions is how does, how do these programs fit into a larger framework? So, you know, you're talking, here, this is sort of talking about each program as a, I think the word everybody uses is now a silo, I sort of don't like it. But anyways, the silo. But, but how does it fit on a farm?
Right, right.
You know, so, so I think that's something that I think is always important.
And that's a very good question, and that's why I really push for a strategic plan, because right now, we have different pieces, because we've looked at data with a single lens, and we've not looked at it holistically. But as we look at our, our program and our district, you know, holistically, then I think that we will see that we're going to stop doing some things and really looking at the data and making the decision based on what would get us the maximum results and filling those gaps for our students, what programs would do that.
Right.
So, yeah, that's.
So, in evaluating a program, if you, that's got to be one of the evaluations. I know we do that, so I just know it wasn't written here, so. And then, sort of that cautionary note that I always throw out there in terms of, you mentioned using data and how you'd use data and how you'd evaluate the data. What I've never really gotten a good grasp on is we have a lot of programs, again, with that overlapping program. So, if you're looking at data, how you ascribe the results of data to a given program is a, is a real trick. It's a real challenge, because you can say, wow, we're doing better. It must be because we did this program. So, I just, you know, again, it'd be in the academy you talked about or whatever else in terms of how to evaluate data. I think that's a, that's a key feature. And then I had a question regarding the programs you, you mentioned here, were these just the ones you chose? Or, I mean, or were these examples for the slides? I just didn't know.
No, those are the ones that I chose.
Okay.
So, all of these were the ones that I chose, because coming in, I couldn't get a good grasp of how well we were doing with these particular programs.
Right. So, I mean, someone hearing this on film shouldn't think these are the only programs the district does. Career Technical Education is one thing that comes into it.
Yes, very good.
It's not a program that was handled in the slides.
Right, right. And primarily because these programs have a financial implications. So, I was, you know, looking at those, you know, how are we, we're using our resources, and if these programs are yielding us the results based on the resources that we're using and the time and et cetera.
Plus benefit.
Yes.
Right. And, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to tack on to that. So, if we think about, we have a finite number of programs, but we know we got all these others. Is there a plan on your part to look at these others as well? I mean, is there a list of programs?
Okay.
That ultimately, we're going to try to make our way through in terms of our, the program evaluation?
Well, we have decided on a program evaluation tool that we're going to use to review all of our programs, one, two, one method, and to use it moving forward with, in adopting or getting any new programs. I'm not sure if we're going to, you know, if there's a really need to go back to some of the other programs that we know that may not be working. But as we get our strategic plan and our strategic focus, this is our roadmap, I think we're going to see that some programs may just kind of fall off because they don't fit with the overall plan. But moving forward, we will have a tool to evaluate all of our programs. So, when we're making decisions about any program, that we're going to go back to those five questions and have a rubric to make sure that those programs are what we want before we make the investment. Because many times, you, you go out and you make the investment of the program, and then when the, you can't sustain them. The dollars go away and the programs, you know, diminish, but we're trying to think strategically, does, will these programs fit in our overall model, our vision? And if so, can we sustain those programs afterwards? So, is it a good investment?
But I think, Cal, if I could also piggyback and challenge a little bit the, the definition of a program, because Cal just gave an example of CTE. I don't think that we're ever going to not do CTE as an example, or some level of gifted programming, or some level of music, you know, vocal music or.
But we may not do a CTE pro, a program within the CTE framework that we don't see you.
A specific program.
A specific program, because.
So, so those are the, for me, those are the, the definition of what a program is becomes really critical for undertaking this analysis, because when I, when I look at your question, too, of is, are students making academic gains in regards to cost, time, training, and materials for, for a specific program? How are you measuring the, you know, to, to look at whether it's a holistic measure of the dollars spent?
Right.
Or whether it's just the staff and the space and the, you know, whatever it is related to that specific program?
Agreed. But, but again, I can look at these questions and I can, I could take any program we do, and I think these, these questions are valid for that program. I mean, no matter if it's a program, if, no matter if it's a program that we know we're going to keep, we need to know, is it sustainable? Is it equitable? Is it, I mean, and I know you agree, so I mean, I'm not, this is not an argument, but it, but it is, these are questions that every program should be evaluated on.
I, I agree, but you know, this is the conversation that we've had before of, of, are the dollars we're spending on, and I'm not going to name anything, because I don't have, I'm not coming in with an agenda on this. Are the dollars that we're spending on X, Y, and Z paying off in, in whatever we're measuring as success for our kids?
But I think it hasn't been a practice in, in a lot of districts. It's just not us.
Yeah.
You know, because we, we want a quick fix sometimes, because we see a problem and we want to fix it quick, and we say, this is the best way to do it. And you don't look long-term and see, wow, you know, and give your, you know, sometimes organizations don't give themselves time to make the gains.
Right.
And, you know, really, to, you know, you have to track progress and you have to go back and sometimes, you know, do some mid-course corrections, and, and that's okay. But this has to be a practice that we decide now that we're going to make sure that before we invest in any program, that we use these criterias. And it's, but I think what it does for us, it really gives us the opportunity to really, really think through before we're making any purchases and, and investments on teachers' time.
So, I only have one final thing, and then I'll yield the floor. And I think this would fit under student growth and performance measures, I'm not sure. And again, not, no surprise, I, I think it would be very important as part of these goals to really focus in on counseling and how we address student life decisions. Let me give an example from something you, you have here, which is a program, you talked about gifted and talented, and you talked about AP programs. AP programs, most people see as this great benefit. So, you're taking an AP exam, you got college credit. There's a whole bunch of colleges that don't, you can come in with a five on, on any number of AP exams and get nothing for it. So, if a student walks in thinking that's the reason to do it, they need to know what, then what, where are you thinking about going? Where are you applying? What are you trying to do? Or is it that you're looking for the rigor of an AP course? But again, I, I think the training of our counseling staff is a key area where we're deficient in some areas. I, I felt that for a long time.
Yeah. That's good. Good point.
Eric?
I just had one question, I mean, an observation, just being that I think it looks, if I'm reading this right and listened correctly, that three out of these four areas of focus, we're going to have a lot more information on in June. Like, this coming June is like a big turning point on all three, on three, except for the parent and community engagement. And I'm sure even we'll have more on that, but the other three will have real benchmarks to know how we're doing. I was just curious about one term, it's on page four of the, I don't know which slide it would be, maybe slide eight or nine, 10. But in program evaluation, the benchmarks, you list program audits that are in place. I'm just curious, what goes into a program audit? What does that exactly entail?
Well, actually, for, for us, when, I'm not sure, did Janetta make that presentation? One of the Board goals, I'm sorry, one of the Board policies that, and that was the policy, I'm not sure what it was, on program eval, 2605, that, program evaluation, we revised that policy to state that we're going to look at program audits, kind of going through to see how well that program is doing. So, it's, we have a measure of, and I can send it back to you, but we have some steps that we instituted in that, as a common practice and to answer as far as those audits. So, I can send those to you. But there are some key questions that we're asking to, as a way to kind of benchmark how well those programs are being implemented. So, it goes to implementation.
Who's doing the audits?
The who for each building, I'm not sure.
I mean, is there an auditor type that's doing the audit or?
No, it's we're audit, it's we're auditing ourselves.
You mean the administration?
Correct. And it could be the teachers, it can be the building principal, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So, it's not a formal audit that people are coming in to audit how we're doing. We're assessing ourselves.
Okay, right.
Based on, you know, are we implementing these programs with fidelity based on these tenants and the program design? And how well are we doing and what mid-course corrections do we need to make?
Yeah, I would love a.
So, I'll, I'll send that to you.
What those tenants are, yeah.
Yes.
Because I know what, like, an IRS audit is, I just don't know.
No, 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 no. Will they drill that? No, 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 no. No, 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 not that, not that detail.
So, yeah, I just wondered how, what that.
Okay.
As I was looking at the Advanced Placement slide, the one thing that came to me is what the baseline looks like. So, we'd say that students will take AP classes, blah, 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 and the district would pick up the cost. A certain number of students are taking the AP classes now, and I'm assuming that some of those, have we ever been picking up costs? But anyway, the question is, is there a baseline that we're dealing with here in terms of the number of students who are taking AP classes, the, the, the move from semester to year-long, you know, what's, what's the data that, what's the baseline?
We do have multiple years of data for not only participation in classes, but the number of students who take those tests and then the performance levels on, on those. So, we, we keep a view of the most recent three years. So, I, I know we have it that far, and actually, we met with the teachers of Advanced Placement courses earlier this year to share that information with them. So, I hate to try to remember the numbers offhand, there's a lot that goes through my mind, but I want to say between 65 and 75% of the students enrolled in, in courses take, have sat traditionally for the exam.
Between 55 and 75?
No, 65 to 75%.
65 to 75.
Some, some areas are much higher than that, some courses are much higher than that. So, I, I do give them reports where it's broken down so that each classroom teacher can see the percentage of their students who sat for.
Yeah, to be interesting, just to see our trends related to it, because if we're going to invest some energy and effort and money into this, it would be nice to be able to track where we are, you know, and be able to see progress as we move forward in terms of.
And we do, I can grab the one, at least from the, the past three years, to see how our students have performed. And just as an anecdote, there is a, you do see a difference in the number of students who participate in the semester classes, those who take it first in the fall semester versus taking it in the spring semester. So, we currently offer like AP Psychology as, as a semester class, and AP Government as a semester class. We do have fewer students who participate in the AP tests that's, that take the course in the fall than that take the course in the spring. So, I think it's a confidence.
So when 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 they take the test, if I take the psychology in the fall, I'm not going to take the exam until.
May.
May, huh?
So so the window for the test administration is the same no matter when you take the course?
They have some refreshers. They do. The teachers offer refreshers.
But the the language here, students will take the AP exam, is that that the district has a goal of a hundred percent or there's an expectation or what does that mean?
That my recommendation is that we, students take the exam because right now it's the option. Students don't have to take.
Right, but how will that be in, will that be enforced? Will that be encouraged? You know?
I think if the district picks up the costs, it would eliminate the barrier for the student not taking it because they can't afford the test.
That's not the only barrier.
But I, yeah, that's.
I mean, obviously, kids really, kids, kids very much, that, you know, they they kind of, they look for other reasons to not take it because they're scared. But anyway, and I'm not necessarily asking for an answer tonight, but I just mean when we communicate this out to families, we need to say the district's going to start picking up the the, um, cost of taking these exams, which I support and I think is is a really smart thing for us to do, um, for these kids, but does it mean that we expect them to? Does it mean that we require them to? Or does it mean that we encourage them to? And those are very different things.
I agree. Okay.
Can I ask a question? So so under Program Five, the gifted and talented, you focused, um, your three points on the M-SAN recommendations, which I appreciate and I think we need to address, but as a district, we made a major shift in this, um, program, how many years ago? Four years ago?
Which one? The consolidation?
The the classrooms. I think it was three.
It's probably been, it's probably been four years ago.
Three or four. Yeah. Um, and so I would also like to see some evaluation of, of the cost and the effectiveness of of that shift, um, to having these, what are we, what do we call them again? The the. Self-contained classrooms, right? Um, because that was a significant shift. There was a lot of of gnashing of teeth and and concern. People generally, I think people whose kids are are enrolled in the and and involved in those classrooms are very happy with what they're getting. That's what I'm hearing. But that that is part of the reason that our numbers of kids in the program, I think, has gone down because we made the decision that you have to be identified in all three of the areas instead of just one or two. Um, so.
Okay.
I'd like to see some evaluation of that also and 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 in addition to these three areas.
Okay.
In regards to, in regards to the the gifted on that slide, um, what do we, it's you're referencing, looking at different methodologies or how we identify students. How do we currently identify students? Wouldn't it just be the test course or what? I mean, or do we have a lucite?
That is a.
How do we do it? I mean, is it, is it duck, duck, goose? I'm trying to, I mean.
Well, we should go back. I mean, honestly, I think that's a big, that's a conversation that we might want to have because I'm I'm remembering Eric, your your very thoughtful comments a couple of meetings ago about concerns about the changes in enrollment and that there's been a significant decline. And I didn't jump in at the time to say the decline is is related to how we identify and and the whole three out of three instead of one or two out of three. Am I right that that's part of it? Um, and and so I think as a board, we should be brought back up to speed on that, not necessarily tonight, but I think that that's a really important thing.
Well, because I mean, it 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 would sound if the decision was made three or four years ago to consolidate or going from programming at every building and to justify the programming, you have more student, instead of hitting three out of three, you hit one out of three, you get to be exposed by consolidating to going to fewer buildings. That means you have, if you have a rigid enforcement of it, that then has that decline.
That's exactly.
Which then begs the question, but is it so bad if a student who doesn't hit three out of three is still exposed to the material?
So I I I agree with Nancy that that.
We have a look at that because is that hurting some of our kids who were identified in one or two out of three?
And there have been adjustments made to how students are are serviced and placed. It's not my level of expertise, so I don't want to say anything.
No, that's okay, but I think we should look at that again.
Because we, there were some adjustments made this year from this.
Changes with the the results that were. And just to answer your your question, and I will gladly give you. The primary means for identification, um, is is testing, so it's a paper, pencil or computer based test. We currently, um, do grade level screening in grade two using the Terranova and the NVIEW and then grades three through twelve using MAP. And then there's another, um, grade level screening that occurs in, historically, it occurred in grade five. This year it occurred in grade six. And then we also measure for superior cognitive ability using the NVIEW as it connects to the recommendations there and then looking at like examining screening criteria, cuts, scores, identification tests. We have had conversations with some of our M-SAN districts and and just other experts in the field to use other tests. I think we talked about this before, like the NNA AT two, which is a a nonverbal test used to identify for superior cognitive ability. There's also an area for creative thinking that is, again, I'm not as familiar with that or the different ways that kids can be identified in that area. But it is something that I know that, uh, Ms. Robinson is is researching and it is a part of what she's looking at and the and the team of of involved stakeholders are looking at for the gifted, uh, program review.
I'll just, I'll just add real quick that that, um, everything that Ms. Bird said was was right on target. The couple of things happened this year. One is that we expanded, um, the criteria and the methodology for the self-contained programs. And one significant thing that was done was the inclusion of MAP testing as a measure. Because that increased the number of students that were going to be assessed potentially for gifted identification as opposed to it being typically kind of the the one test per year or referral process. We were an ongoing picture of of students who may qualify. Ms. Rod, I think it'd be fantastic to have an opportunity to talk about it in more detail.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Because we have expanded the the elementary services by adding gifted intervention specialists to our elementary schools that do not have self-contained programs. And so part of what, uh, we've been looking at this year is whether or not we expand self-contained, whether or not we expand the gifted services, you know, what 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 have these changes brought us to date? We know our numbers are increasing, which is great. We know that our numbers within the self-contained program increased. And we're also looking at other methods of identification. So it would be a very good topic for everyone to see.
Okay, so one of our work sessions later in the year, I think we should talk about this.
Okay.
Just one little other piece. And that's related to the 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 transition. We had talked about the transition to the new facilities and Wiley being sort of a subset of that. And I know we have to try to peel Wiley back to get at it. But one of the questions that I have is that as we are moving forward, we have, we have both of those things going on at the same time. That is, we have, we're going into the plans or design development, I guess, is where we are in terms of, uh, the facility at the high school. And we have the Wiley thing that hopefully we're pretty close to being able to put a lid on it, I guess. I mean, we're having done here.
To the Wiley piece, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And and so my question has to do with the Wiley piece, and that is, where is the time capsule going to be buried?
It's a very specific question.
Steve Shigalas has that a hair.
In the ground. I believe. Will it be on a Monday or a Tuesday?
That's a Gary question.
Sometime afternoon.
You need like a treasure man.
I think so.
We haven't decided yet.
It's in. It's in play.
Well, we're going to have a ceremony shortly, aren't we?
In May.
May, we've got one.
We have time.
The ground's frozen.
Oh, the 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 meetings don't have an impact on it, I guess, huh?
Okay.
No.
Under snow right now. Let's just put it that way.
You think?
Okay, so. Are there other questions, gentlemen? Comments?
All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you. This is, uh, this is good.
So, well, the team has worked well, so kudos to the Ed Services team. Thank you guys. They've been working, uh, really hard to, for us to kind of put, um,
Thank you.
Put these pieces together. So thank your team. Next, we have the IT update. Mr. Shigalas, you want to kind of give a context?
Yes, I do a little bit. So, thank you, Dr. Dixon. So you may remember that, um, this is probably two years ago, we made the commitment to sort of divide our IT operations and moves, move the instructional portion down to Ed Services and sort of the infrastructure maintenance part into Business Services. And, um, in lieu of hiring a in-house supervisor, we ended up contracting that service to a company called Epiphany Management Group. And James Myers, I am pleased to introduce to you, is the representative from, uh, Epiphany Management Group. And he has been working with Business Services and it's not by accident that he's sandwiched, although they've they've gotten up on me here, sandwiched between both Sandy Womack and myself because, uh, like everything we do, James's work is very much driven by what's happening in the Ed Services world. And so he's going to talk a little bit about the Business Services side, but he's also going to talk about devices, which falls into Sandy's world more than necessarily Business Services where we're kind of more maintenance of those, but some selection and and also a a going to give up a, and I'm stealing a little bit of your thing, but but a five-year projected, um, chart of what we need in terms of devices. And that's a service that that EMG can provide for us and we've asked them to provide for us and to to help us develop. So with that, I will turn it over to James and, um, I'm sure there'll be questions too. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. You always told me I was a stand-up guy, so that's what I'm going to do. For this presentation. Steve gave a good intro. I'd like to first give, uh, some thanks where it's due. I feel it's a privilege to be able to present to this board. Uh, really is an honor to be able to serve the community here, Cleveland Heights University Heights. And I am excited to be here at this time. This is a very historic time in this school district. And if you're not excited to be here, you should be because there's a lot going on and it's a great thing to be a part of. Uh, so I will, uh, get started here. I know there was a draft that was sent around a little bit earlier and this presentation might not match page for page with the draft, which is because. And that is because, as Steve said, we work very closely with the Educational Services team. We meet on a regular basis and we went through this presentation. We added, we subtracted, and we we wanted to make it a progression and it still will be a progression. This was brought to you as a working session so that we can continue to work on it, get your input, get your feedback, take it back and make this thing the best it could possibly be. So we really want this to be a progression to the best possible solution. And in that, Steve, Sandy, Andrea, Allison, Jeff, Kristy Bauer and Doug Jones, my senior director at EMG, are all part of that team. So thank you to all of them. So here's what we're going to cover today. We're going to do a brief, uh, summary of E-Rate. If you haven't heard of E-Rate yet, um, we'll we'll bring you up to speed with a quick summary and then our operational goals. So what are we as Business Services going to do, uh, with the E-Rate funding? Then we'll get into the new technology pilot program. This is how we evaluated devices that we were going to use in particular at the high school. We'll cover that technology device forecast, which is what are the devices we need for the whole district moving forward and then some quick next steps and then some questions. So what is E-Rate? There's a lot of myths about E-Rate, what it can be used for, what it can do. E-Rate at its base is a commitment to funding. So we apply on a yearly basis. And if we spend money on items that are in E-Rate categories, which is covered by the USAC, Universal Service Administration Company, this is, uh, a federal schools and libraries program. If we buy things that are on their list, they will provide funding or reimbursement for the items that we buy. So we have available E-Rate funding that we went back with the, uh, E-Rate consultants and looked at. Funding's available from two thousand nine and two thousand eleven. And there is funding available in the future. The new E-Rate rules called E-Rate Modernization came out a few months ago and we are working with all of those to provide a backbone, network infrastructure backbone for the district. And I'll I'll explain a little bit in this next very busy slide. The best way to describe E-Rate is to go through what we're going to use it for. And if we go back to two thousand and nine, there is about two hundred thousand dollars of funding remaining. Uh, and we are planning to use that funding to provide infrastructure upgrades to five elementary schools. We will have one school that will require additional funding. So the goal is to seek reimbursement for the one school that requires additional funding. The result is that every elementary school classroom receives a new high-speed cable, which is the cable that goes from the, uh, switch to the classroom and a new access point that supports more devices. The goal is to do that in every elementary classroom this summer using most, all of that oh-nine money and then we'll move forward into that eleven money.
I have a quick question. I hate to interrupt. If it's from fiscal year oh-nine, why this is, why is it still there?
Why the E-Rate works is you have to apply, uh, every year with what you want to do.
Okay.
And you say, I want to add this, 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 and this to our school district. They'll say, that's approved. We'll we'll help you fund that. If you do not get to this or that, it's then held over to the next year and you can defer it or you can apply for substitutions. So we went, what we did was we went back and looked, uh, we put in for a, uh, extension and we looked for ways that we could apply for the things that counted so we can use it today.
When you say from the switch to the classroom, is that like the hub or something?
Yes, yes. So from the closet to the classroom. So we look at what we had in two thousand eleven money. And just that, one of the things that we did do is we would substitute. So if we were planning to purchase a video system that is now obsolete, we would substitute that to free up the money to buy access points. So we did that in both these cases. So two thousand eleven, we have about four hundred thousand dollars that we can use to reimburse the work from the sixth elementary school. We can provide network infrastructure upgrades to Wiley, which would allow that to be at the top of the, uh, technology platform for the next seven years, considering if it was going to be a swing space for that long or not, uh, including high-capacity cable and access points. We would also provide select cabling and access points at Monticello and Rockspur Middle. Uh, they, the middle schools were one of the first in Northeast Ohio to really take on that wireless environment. So they're in need of an update. But given that we're going to be renovating them soon, we didn't want to spend a lot of time renovating all of the cabling there and all the closets there. The other thing we plan to use that for is network hardware. So we can, with two thousand eleven money, buy servers, we can buy UPSs as power supplies that will power our servers and keep our network up in the event of power loss. We'd like to have this all completed by July of two thousand sixteen. And then looking forward to the modern E-Rate options, we have the ability to get a hundred fifty dollars per student to use toward network infrastructure. So they've taken some things out. They've taken out some of the telephones. They've taken out, uh, some of the web hosting. They've taken out the servers and they really want you to focus on things that are going to increase connectivity for each student. So what we're going to do is evaluate future trends in communication and wireless technologies, integrate E-Rate funding with curriculum instructions, vision for future learning environments, textbook and curriculum adoption models will continue to be blended models with text and technology tools and online curriculum. So we'll be applying for that next year. Steve, you have something to add?
Sorry about that. Didn't mean to do the squeak to signal. Uh, but what's, but I wanted to just emphasize that the fiscal oh-nine and the fiscal eleven commitments from USAC are are sort of in the bank. We have those commitments from them and if we spend the monies, we'll get the reimbursements. Fiscal sixteen. Fiscal '16, we have to apply for, and there's no guarantee that we will get that.
That was, I was going to ask.
It's competitive, huh?
It is, yes, it is.
So, '16 is the wish list as opposed to guaranteed?
Correct.
So, when we talk, when we talk about that high-capacity cable, that's an underground, hardware, underground cable?
That is not dark fiber, that is what we are talking about as far as the cable that runs through the walls, so.
Okay, okay, so we're not, we're not running it all, okay, okay. I was going to say, for $400,000, that's, that's a pretty good deal.
When you were talking about offsets on the years that have already, are in the past, do they use the benchmark of what was allowed at that time in order for you to offset? Or, or the benchmark of what's being allowed now in the new rules?
No, we have a lot more flexibility in those older years, because the funding, the items are different.
Is this, I mean, I guess as long as we're paused here, I'll interrupt too. The, the work being done at the elementaries, is that work that we'll be able to maintain through, I mean, if we, if we take Phase Two of the District-wide Facilities Plan and we work on the elementary schools, will all this stay in place, or we have to redo this?
It depends on the timing. You know, technology changes so rapidly, that if we're talking seven, eight, nine years in the future, it may all be not salvageable at that point, so theoretically, yes.
Okay, so we'll move on from the E-Rate at this point. If you have any more questions, we can take them after. Let's take a look at our proposed technology device forecast. So, there were two parts to this, the high school device selection, how we use the high school cart system, how we use the high school device pilot, and PD. So, let me jump into that first. The high school device selection, so at the start of this year, we switched to a cart system. Start of the school year, existing student technology devices, the netbooks, were deployed to individual classrooms on carts as opposed to individual students to take 24/7. This change has allowed students and teachers to reliably have the technology they need each school day, and those netbooks must be replaced before the start of next school year.
Why is that?
The netbooks are outdated technology. They don't meet the screen requirements for part testing, they don't meet the speed requirements for classroom instruction, so it is time to part ways with them.
Yeah, parts are no longer available for them, they're, they're not reliable, they're breaking down, I mean, we have, we, we do not have an option.
How old are they at this juncture?
Five years old?
Yeah, they'll be five.
I don't, I mean, how many kids are actually even using them?
It's dwindled, and the, as you see with the cart system, the pilot system we put in place, I mean, we're infusing newer technology that's used every day in replacing those netbooks already.
We put four carts of new Chromebooks and four carts of Dell notebooks out, and teachers just use them like mad, because they're such better equipment.
Yeah, I kind of jumped ahead there a little bit.
That's fine, we'll just jump right into it. So, this new technology has been available for teachers and students, the pilots, the start of the school year, that's four carts of Chromebooks, that's 100 Chromebooks, and four carts of the Dell 3300 series notebooks, so you had 200 additional devices that teachers would go to a sign-up website and sign them out, and they've been signed out for daily use almost every day since August 2014. So, the staff have an opportunity to try out both. Feedbacks of cost favor the Chromebooks. The district has nearly completed a technical move to Google Apps for Education, which also favors the Chromebook. Digital curriculum tools and mandated tests rely on the updated technology, Study Island, TCI, Agile Mind, Cognitive Tutor. Sandy, did you want to add anything to these?
Several of the tools that we use right now in the district requires to have the speed as well as the capability and the memory in order to keep up with it, and as we start looking at new technology purchases, if we don't have equipment that can keep up with the speed, as well as the, well, the infrastructure's being taken care of, but there's no way we'll be able to keep up. So, as we start looking at the curriculum tools and what we currently use, right now, we have over 60 different applications that are being used on our iPads, we've got about 36 different web-based programs that we're using at the middle schools on their iPads, and we also have curriculum tools at the high school from the high school social studies alive, to Spanish 6th and 7th, to Study Island 6th through 12th grade, that are all based on internet, which means we have to have computers that will be up to date to keep us there.
Do you see a move, to move more and more to internet, technology-based textbooks, I guess? I mean, do we, as we think about what we're doing, we're foreshadowing that movement, I guess, aren't we?
I think, and there's also going to be moves to online curriculum in general, so that therefore you'll probably always have to have at least a classroom set, at least one classroom set of books, but the majority of our curriculum, looking at the things we're looking at right now, and I can't give you a projection on how far into the near future is moving in that direction, Mr. Redstone.
To work off of that, on the other side, we have the professional development for instructional return on investment. This technology integration is an expectation. Sandy, did you want to comment on that as well?
Oh, right now, we have a young lady by the name of Kristy Bauer, who does an exceptional job in technology. She's definitely an asset and a resource to the district, and she has been training the staff on Google Docs, so that we can move to that Google platform. And so, those Chromebooks also help us significantly with that in regards to that process. One of the things that is good about it is although we'll be able to share documents through Google, we can also still use our Microsoft Word and Transfer, because most of us have been trained on Word, and there was concern about it, but there is a phasing in, a plan to, to implement Google Docs throughout the, throughout the district. And in regards to the new technology, in regards to what's going on with our Common Core state standards, it's an expectation, as you look through the Common Core analyzed site, referred to, but it also states that teachers should be using technology in almost everything in order to keep the kids engaged in the classroom. So, those are the things we're looking at.
And I think, you know, I think these two points are, are going to be critical as we deploy new technology, that, that we provide the necessary professional development for staff, and that we set that level of expectation, so.
Training is started this year already.
And as, as, as we think about the Common Core state standards, and we think about the technology and it being embedded in there, are we expecting that the state is going to ante up to help support this transition?
We weren't really all supposed to laugh.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Well, you can always dream.
Actually, in regards to the technology integration, when do we anticipate having a sense of what we are putting into the, this is more prior for, well, I don't know, in the, when we're, we get to the classroom level at the high school, when do we anticipate knowing what are we building in, or is that coming up in the presentation?
Yeah, we will, we will get to that very shortly.
I'll keep jumping ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, for the most part, we've been talking about the high school, but we want to look forward to what's going to happen at the middle school. We want to add a laptop pilot cart, similar to how we, we did it at the high school, to 7th and 8th grade, so they have the opportunity to start using that technology, the keyboard and, and laptop type scenario. And we want to enhance the way that iPads are used for instruction, and this has been an issue that, that we've had recently with how these iPads are handled by students, and one of the, three of the things that we're going to do is enroll them in the device enrollment program. This is something Apple came out with to try and quell some of the unrest that districts were having with their problems, with their iPads, I call them problems. So, what we'll do is be able to enroll all of these devices, and what's neat about it, and I kind of snicker at this in a sinister way, is that all of the ones that have been stolen will now be back under our control. So, once we enroll them based on our PO number into this device enrollment program, we can actually lock out the ones that have walked away from this district. That will also give us more opportunities to see what's installed on these iPads and be able to take some things off from a remote perspective. The other thing is focus, this is integrated guided access, so a teacher can use an iPad in her classroom to have all of the kids visit a website. So, by standing up here, if you all had iPads, I could press, "Visit Cleveland Heights CHUH.org", and all of your iPads would then have that website on it. So, we want to add these tools in to make those a little bit better for, for next year. We also want to add keyboards, so that they can use them for testing.
Could I just ask a quick question? I realize some of this is what we have now versus what, so you're piloting Chromebooks, or seem to be going toward Chromebooks at the high school, you have iPads, those are two different operating systems, two different, similar in their environments, but do you see that as a benefit, do you see that as a possible problem that you want to move away from over time?
My personal opinion is that I like to see diversity, however, in this scenario, iPads have not lent themselves well to what we've wanted, and they do appear, based on what we're doing with the Straight A grant at Garrity, to have a place in the K-5 environment, and Garrity is going to lead the way in what we want to do there instructionally, as part of that Straight A. So, if we are able to take those iPads or Chromebooks and infuse them at the middle schools and start to cascade those devices down, if I can move right into the next slide, which is the elementary school devices.
Well, actually, stay back at middle for a minute, because I, you're saying add a laptop program, so it sounds like you're moving toward the Chromebooks at the high school level, and then you're talking about adding the Chromebook, probably the laptop program at the middle school level, but also using the iPads that we already own in a more efficient and effective way? Is that what I, is that what I understand from this slide?
Yes.
So, the middle schoolers will be using both?
They will have a pilot, so that, so that when, and you'll see it on kind of our forecast, eventually, we want the middle schoolers to be using the same technology they'll be using in high school, so kind of a transition.
And, and, and so, the, the idea is not that we will, at this, well, you'll get to it in the next slide, but at this point, we won't be purchasing any more iPads for middle or high school at all. We'll be using the iPads we own at the middle school level.
According to our, our work in progress, yes.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like basically we already have the, we have the iPads.
Right.
We own them outright, so it's a matter of how do we maximize the usage. I always thought that, excuse me, that the middle schools sort of, they seem more of a, from an educational standpoint, there'd be more value in the K through 5 component than middle school and high school, and it seems like the issues and problems, this is bearing it out. And as much as I'm a fan, I'm an Apple versus a PC guy, or even Google for that matter, the dollars and cents, we can't, you can't beat it from a.
I thought you were an Apple's guy.
I am, that's, I'd rather go Apple, but, you know, if it's twice as much, got to go with the Chromebook then.
How many, how many devices are on a cart?
25 is, is the number we typically use, some could take up to 30. So, having looked at it that way, and we've kind of alluded to this, elementary school devices, we want to, as of, for 2015, 2016, we want to update those labs, so that we can extend their use. Currently, elementary schools have two carts of iPads each, that's 50 iPads each, with the exception of Garrity, which we've already upgraded the infrastructure there and added carts in every room for the Straight A grant. So, we want to continue to research cost-effective methods of adding additional iPads for instruction at this level, and some of that will include what we do in our forecast down the road. And this is the device forecast, and there's a disclaimer there at the bottom, this forecast is a work in progress, Education and Business Services will continue to.
Doesn't really matter, because we can't read it, so.
I'm going to handle it.
No, I know, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
In other words, we're, we're working on this, and since it was a working session, Dr. Dixon and I agreed that we, we should present this and bring you all to speed, so that we can get the best possible plan in place.
Now, the dollars and cents, are these, are you looking at these from E-Rate or other, this, where's the money for these?
I'm glad you asked. E-Rate cannot be used for end-user devices.
Okay, so.
So, everything from the network to the.
So, these, so these numbers here, these numbers aren't E-Rate, these are?
General funds.
General funds, that's why, okay, that's why.
And they can't be permanent improvement?
They can be.
They can be, because they last five years or more?
They can be permanent, yes, they can be purchased out of the PI account.
They have to last five years or more to do that? That was the old standard for permanent improvement.
Or do they have to be projected to last five years?
So, I don't need to know tonight.
Having a life and living five years are two different things.
Just, you trying to answer that question?
Nope.
No, 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 it's okay.
What I was going to say is I, I will, I will investigate that further, just to double check. The last time I looked into it, yes, we can buy devices, I, I don't know the specific answer about the five years, but we can use.
For the record, I'm not sure that's what I, where I'd want to use it anyway, so that's there.
Understood.
I see that we got a $3 million hit here for the next five years, I guess. And I'm wondering, you know, we've got a budget for textbooks right now, is, is this going to be in the same general budget, or is it somewhere else?
I think some line items will come from what we look at at our textbook adoption, because it will be a technology tool for curriculum, so some items will come from that as well. So, we'll be coming from that budget as well, there will be portions pulled from that budget, definitely.
But I'm, I mean, I would assume that the textbook publishers require an expenditure per user, even when they're electronically available, is that correct?
I think.
Meaning, you're not going to, am I, I don't know, I would assume that, that you're not going to see great savings just because you go to.
Online.
Yeah, my expectation is that we may not.
Sadly, I, I just.
Yeah, we may not see savings at all, we may see increased costs, is, is, is what I'm afraid of.
Or, or you could argue, you see, you spend the same amount of money, but because electronic and the updated frequent, you get, you spend the same amount of money, but your, your textbook is much more current.
Updated yearly.
Exactly.
So, we want to kind of look at this slide as the 10,000-foot view of where we're going, and it was color-coded to kind of show when things begin and when things end. So, you see the netbooks are coming to an end at the end of this school year, and at the end of this school year, we were adopting new devices for the high school. We want to, we did a significant upgrade to teacher devices this year to, to make sure that they last for another year. And that was a big issue that was pressing us at the beginning of this year, and we solved it with an upgrade rather than an infusion of new devices. We plan to make those last until the end of next year, and you can see where the colors end is where that device life has ended. Also, you see where the colors drop down the page, is where we want to extend the life of those devices to save the district money. There's a big transition at the beginning of 2017, and that's for obvious reasons, we're moving back to the newly renovated Cleveland Heights High School, and at that time, a middle school's moving into Wiley. So, that is a really good era of change, because we're going to have new things available to us at that high school. We don't really know what they are yet, we don't know, we're working with the architects to discover what other higher education institutions are doing, as far as the technology they're bringing to the classrooms, and we want to be able to ride back into that new high school with, with the tools that will take advantage of all the latest technologies. So, at that point, we could transition the devices that we purchase now for high school to the middle school, and move those iPads down to the elementary school, and go into the new Cleveland Heights High School with new devices that take advantage of that technology. And so, some of these numbers underneath are just ways, ways that we would support that, and again, we're going to refine these costs, we're going to work with curriculum instruction, the architects, to, to get a better feel for this, so it really is a work in progress.
But I do think what's important is this shows the order of magnitude of what we're talking about. I think it's important that we have this kind of a plan, that we forecast out this far, and that these devices do have a limited life, and so you have to think about, okay, how long are they going to last, what are we going to do next? So, I mean, I think that's, that's what's important about this, as opposed to necessarily the exact details of, of what's here.
Are handheld devices any part of this?
As far as.
Has it worked into any of the plan?
Do you mean student supplied, or you mean just any?
I'm just asking if it was even considered, because I would, I would think that a large, I would bet a majority of our, at least our older students are quite proficient at handheld devices, and so it's, I just, I don't know if it's a, it's a resource you've considered, and I don't need you to go into any detail, just as, do we consider it at all?
We have considered it, we are even surveying some of the teachers about, bring your own device and other such initiatives. We have, in our discussion, seen a lot of potential problems with it being. problems with the BYOD scenario, whereas you don't know what's connecting to your network. There's inequality issues with some students having the best device ever and some having nothing at all.
Well, that's in the bring-your-own. There's also the we supply.
We haven't considered supplying any other handheld devices other than the iPads at this time.
Okay. That was just, again, just curiosity.
So our next steps, this is to complete that five-year device forecast, to plan and budget effectively for E-rate improvements so that they happen as soon as possible. Continue to work with curriculum instruction to finalize the device forecast and budget. Continue to evaluate the future technological needs for new facilities at Cleveland Heights High School in 2017. My contact information is in here. Feel free to use it. Questions.
Comments?
Is it possible to get an inventory of what we have where? I just, because I mean, I know we had the, again, I'll play the newbie card.
Yep, that is possible.
You know, what hard, how much, I mean, I know we have the, we have the middle school iPads, but how many? Is it 100? Is it 1,000? You know, I'm just curious, just what we have. I would assume we have an, or we should have an inventory.
Yep, we do.
I'd just be curious to see what we have and where it is.
I would just, you know, because sometimes you know, throws the thing, I think it's a great idea to be doing this kind of analysis. So don't, please don't take any of my own questions as being overly pejorative, or pejorative, yeah, pejorative. The reason I brought the handheld, and this is just a personal opinion, I think that schools universally look at cellphone usage. And I think people in general think of cellphone usage as a terrible negative. We're putting in a new, at my company, we're putting in a new ERP enterprise system, which is, it's the basic operating system for the company. It, it's also available on our handhelds. I can do, I can run my entire company from a handheld. So, and that includes from, from the day, from, from, from meeting someone for the first time, all the way to bringing it all the way through production to, to putting out the door. That's the way industry is headed. So I'm only suggesting, again, I do absolutely see a lot of fraught with excitement. But I'm, but at the same time, rather than making it a terrible thing that, oh my gosh, kids are using cell phones, I, every kid I know knows how to use a cellphone better than I do. Not that I'm any standard, by the way. But it might be something to consider as, as we look forward. Because if we're trying to look to the future, I don't think the future is headed toward more desktops. I, I, that's just my own opinion. I think you're going to lose wires. I think everything's going to be, you know. So anyway, it's just something to think about.
Anyone else?
I'm glad to see again the long-term planning out of all this. It's always, that's always heartening. So thank you.
And I guess just for, for you, Steve, and for you, Talisa, to just make sure that we're updated as these things are, as they're finalized. Because sometimes I think there are these huge gaps in, in reporting on these major expenditures for technology. We haven't talked about it in a long time. So I'd like, you know, I, I appreciate that it's a work in progress and that makes a lot of sense, but.
Well, when we come to, because you mentioned expenditures, I think we, the key thing, at least my takeaway from that is I think we need to articulate for the home audience is that the, the numbers in the, that was a projected theoretical allocation. That is not, we have not committed to that only because our, our wonderful friends at the media monolith might pull out that number and say district plan is suspended. That is not, to my knowledge.
Right.
That is a projected need and desire as opposed to we are not carved in stone that that's an allocation.
Right.
Correct? I mean, that, that would be, if we implemented this plan, that's a theoretical cost.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Because I just don't want it to be a headline out there saying we're planning on doing that. That's not the case.
Right. And, and again, as both you and Nancy have said, we, we would come back to the board.
Right, right.
For your approval for expenditures.
And I do like, and I, I like to reiterate, reiterate, I do like the idea, hey, we have, as technology, an iPad that was five years ago, state-of-the-art at the high school, is good for the middle school, reusing stuff, as long as it still operates, it doesn't have the highest, you know, capacity, there is still, you can still repurpose it and reuse it. So I think the more mileage we can get out of something we bought and paid for, the better.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you. This is fairly comprehensive as far as I'm concerned. And we appreciate, I appreciate you bringing it forward and us having a chance to look at it at this point. And do look forward to updates from time to time.
Anything else? Oh, yes. Mr. Zucker, I sense that you have something you'd like to add.
So, so as you might recall, in, in our committee reports last time, I, for whatever reason was preoccupied, and I want to correct a mistake I made last time in terms of, next week, one week from tonight, is the Reaching Musical Heights program. I did a very poor job of talking about last time. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows about it. It's a fabulous program that involves a tremendous number of students. It's at Severance Hall next week, next Tuesday night. The actual program starts at 7:30 in the main hall. There's also reception at 6 o'clock. If anyone is still interested in tickets, there's still really good tickets available for either just the concert. There's also for the, for the reception, if, if you so desire. Go to the Reaching Heights website. It actually redirects you i, in terms of buying tickets. You can call Severance Hall to get tickets. People can contact me, they can contact the school board. Look on the website. There's links to Reaching Heights. But anyway, it is a great program. And I just want to make sure I said more about it than I said last time. Thanks, Nancy, for giving me the chance to do that.
All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Mr. Gainer.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.